All right.
Okay, I'd like to move that we reconvene to our regular workshop session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It sounded like approximately seven ayes.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Eye it up, everybody. All right. Anyone so inclined is now invited to join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. And Scott may have a virtual flag available for us.
We do. Hang on one second.
That's beautiful. Perhaps you or Linda could lead us in the pledge.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Linda and others. Linda, are there any communications that are not on the agenda? In other words, any communications?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. And student representatives, we already heard the most important part of your reports. Would you like to give your more formal reports?
Of course. So at the high school, May 1st was Highland Park High School's virtual signing day, which was led by Mr. Lester and Ms. Luxa. Teacher Appreciation Week is May 4th through May 8th. So there's a project going on that students can send their working teachers a big thank you. May 30th is the e-Munk Conference, which is the Model United Nations Conference that is digital. The student participants, the Model United Nations Club, have helped to raise a combined amount for two fundraising efforts of over $4,000 for the HP Food Pantry. That is also the largest donation from a single group that the Food Pantry in town has ever received. So big props to them. And DECA is hosting their interest meeting for next year on May 8th as well. Shifting to the middle school, Teacher Appreciation Week is from May 4th to the 8th. So keep your eyes peeled for some videos. And Diversity Day is scheduled for May 22nd. And teachers are working hard to put together their remote sessions.
That has got to be a challenge. Those diversity days are so wonderful and it's hard to imagine doing it remotely. We look forward to hearing about it when it happens. Where are you? Andy, did you have a... Andy? Oh, you just... That was you, Andy. Stella, I can't... I can't tell all these pictures on my screen. Sorry, I misspoke. That time I heard you. Stella, what do you have for us?
Their Bardo Virtual Teacher Appreciation Week is May 4th through the 8th. And at Irving, they're having their virtual appreciation activities throughout this week. And our activities are planned in order to have some end-of-the-year activities that were originally planned by the PTO. And we'll be sponsoring a virtual book fair, ooh, that's fun, starting Monday, May 11th. And Ms. McNally looks forward to wonderful lunch meetings with the students in the upcoming week.
Oh, that's awesome. That must be so cute to watch. Not that it's just a cute thing, it's an important thing. Any questions for our students? Okay, Scott, shall we move on to your report?
Actually, Michelle has a question.
Oh, I can't even. Michelle, go ahead.
No, it's fine.
Too much stimulus. Too much stimulus.
Too much. I totally understand. I just really quickly wanted to know, in a general sense, if our student reps could tell us how whole learning is going in kind of an overview, generalized way. I haven't heard many stories. I know everyone's feeling like they're getting lots more assignments than they normally would. But I don't know if everyone's doing okay. I was just wondering if we could get a general idea.
Um, I think it's actually, I mean, for seniors, I feel like maybe it's a little bit different. But I think it's going pretty well and our teachers are being very understanding. And we're having a lot of Zooms, not only talking about our work, but talking about how we're dealing with this, you know, stressful and kind of like sad times, especially for the class of 2020.
Oh, that's really good to hear.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? I know what the problem is. The faces keep moving around on my screen. They're in different positions every time. So I was looking at it, Andy, and it turned to Stella. Scott, you're up there. You're usually always in my upper left-hand corner. Presentation, this will be our final 2020 to 2021 budget presentation.
It will be. Not a whole lot different than my preliminary budget presentation. Before I get to it, I just want to note about remote learning. It's going to continue through June 23rd. By now, I'm sure you all know the governor announced that we'll be closed until rest... to the rest of the year. We're looking ahead now to summer and, of course, fall. So the next three Honeywell messages, starting this Wednesday night, will include information... I'm sorry, starting next Wednesday night, will include information about what plans we have for... to allow students and teachers to come back to the buildings in waves over the course of several weeks to pack up their things, likely in the summer. Plans that we are already making for the summer. We think we might be going with either a hybrid remote learning and live program or a potentially complete remote learning program extension through the summer. And then we're making plans for the fall. And that I'll announce at the end of my next three series Honeywells, probably in the third week of May, second or third week of May. So be on the lookout, a lot more details coming, okay? But on to the budget. So after a two month and a half layaway from the budget, the Finance Committee, the Business Administrator, Linda, and I took another look and have resolved the following, which we present to the board for its approval. You can see our expenditures have been charted out. There is some differentiation in particular rows, including salaries and benefits between what I presented back in March and what I'm presenting now. By the way, the public, the board as well, can pull down my preliminary budget presentation in PDF format from the website. I'm going to give you the address to the site where we have all our budget information at the end of this presentation. And you can actually compare the numbers from that point to this point. So I'm not going to go over all of these numbers. I just want you to see what we're looking at in terms of expenditures. We note the change in expenditures from last year to this year. You can see that we are reaping some reward from the health benefits premium having depreciated this particular year. I always like to show the following data because special education, for various reasons, has annually taken... taken a pretty big bite of our expenditure pie. We have numbers of students coming to our pre-K programs, students we might be receiving from other districts, which is brought on board a family from New Boswick, in which one student was already placed in an out-of-district placement that we are obligated to continue, of course. So there are out-of-district tuition costs increasing for a variety of reasons, including migration of students from other communities into Houghton Park. And because we are getting numbers and numbers of young children coming to our pre-K disabled program and our kindergarten special ed program requiring extraordinary services. So you can see here that we're increasing our... just our out-of-district tuition and transportation budgets by close to $1 million. This is just for tuition and transportation. We are also increasing our special education budget in the area of programs. We have to add another Applied Behavioral Analysis, EBA, program in one of our schools as a result of increasing numbers. You can see here that we had to incur additional salary costs going into next year strictly because we are bound by contract, of course, to provide an increase for our teachers. What I did for the board and the community is break out, that's the second row, break out what dollars we had to build into the budget that we didn't anticipate we would have to because we had to bring on additional staff to accommodate changing enrollment, in this case, special education enrollment. So we're having to incur about $182,000 alone in unanticipated increased staffing needs as a result of our expansion to special education program. You can see that we didn't receive significant state aid, far below what, of course, we're owed. We are anticipating a fund balance, that is, remaining funds that we will not have spent this year, in part because we will have gone approximately four months without providing full services. We are anticipating a fund balance of a little over $1.7 billion that we're using to help prevent deep staff cuts that I would have had to make. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping I won't be at the same crossroads next year. Of course, I'm hoping we don't have a crisis next year as well and not having to consider the deep cuts that I was considering. The last slide of data is most important to, I think, to our residents. It shows the impact on taxes. You can see there's a very insignificant increase on the average home this next year. It's a combination of incurring ratable revenue for the borough shared tax base and then the fact that we're only going to be increasing taxes by 2%, essentially, which is what we're capped to do. The information that I'm sharing, I'll place on the website. If you go to the website, hpschools.net, you'll see a... actually, two areas. The Board of Education menu at the top in the navigation bar, that you can click and then from there, you'll be able to see the budget page. Or I've placed a link right on the front page to the left side that says Budget 2020/2021 Information. So that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions from the board?
Jesus, I'm in a meeting.
I mute Mark. If I can find him. Here he comes.
Sorry.
Questions from the board about the budget. Members of the public should know that we have discussed this many, many, many times, particularly the Finance Committee. So it's not that we're accepting it unquestioningly. Darcy?
I do have one, since I have it here.
Go for it.
Just out of curiosity, did you guys not have any waivers available to you this year to go over the 2%? Or did you just choose not to?
We did not.
Wow, nothing?
Nothing, zero.
Nothing? Wow, that's crazy. Because what, we can potentially get them for enrollment and what else?
Health benefit increases.
Which there was no health benefit increase, there was actually a decrease. And then what's the other one?
Things that don't relate, refer to, relate to us. Dealing with sending and receiving schools.
Bank cap, if we had any, we don't.
Right, right, yeah, but there's the bank cap and then the new... I remembered that we weren't going to have any of that this year. But sometimes there are waivers that are available. But it makes sense that there's not the one for health benefits, that there isn't the one for enrollment.
Right.
Okay.
I think there's one with pension contributions, but that's if you offer a early retirement program or something. It doesn't apply to us.
Right.
Boy, that's unfortunate. Chris?
Yeah, for the 3.4 million, I think you said, for out-of-district expenses, about how many students are served by that?
Mark, you want to answer that question? Otherwise I can take the data.
I have a good idea. I don't have exact numbers, but it's close to 40.
Yeah, I can give you an exact number in a second, Chris.
That's okay. Just in a... I was just wondering.
An approximation.
Yeah. And Mark, do you want to say anything about the possibility of, like, if we do have to fund protective equipment for the fall?
Yeah, so appreciate the question. Chris brought up earlier something that I've been thinking of. When we open in the fall, there are steps that we may want to take or the state may require us to take to protect our students and our staff. And so I worked on a short report today of the kind of things we can do. And I'll just briefly say a few words, but I would like to discuss it next week in finance because there's some financial implications. Perhaps a half-hour finance meeting to go over that. But the kind of things we may want to do are protective equipment, like additional N95 masks for the nurses and any aide that works with a nurse. Masks for... or shields for teachers or teachers and students. optionally, I don't think at this moment we can force anyone to do it, but that may change. So we may want to put orders in early. If you buy enough of the equipment, you know, enough of that, you can get very low prices and everyone doesn't need an N95 mask, presumably. The other thing is equipment or help in... with regard to temperature taking. If you see the videos of what's going on now in China where they're opening schools, there are lines, there are lines, there are queues where people line up in the morning and get a temperature reading right from their forehead, one after another on the line. And anyone with a temperature gets put in a different line so someone can check them more thoroughly. We might need additional help and we might need additional equipment to do that. So I'd like to discuss that and appreciate Chris bringing it up, really. It's something that we have to take seriously. People are dying from this, so...
Mark, yeah, it behooves me to have you come to our next District Safety Committee meeting because we've been discussing the very same thing and I think we need to make sure we're putting all of our eggs in the same basket.
When is that?
I'll invite you to the next meeting.
And I would suggest, Chris, you've been interested, you might like to be there and you might like to, I don't know.
Yeah.
Other board members may want to be there. I think we have to take this seriously. Remember, we closed the schools before the state mandated it. And I think we need to be thinking in the fall of doing this very carefully.
Good point.
And we're not talking fortunes, by the way. For a modest or moderate number of masks, we can... if we can get them, it doesn't cost a fortune. It's just the... it's just the doing it properly and having the rules around it that count.
I mean, I think, wouldn't doing it for students wind up being fairly expensive?
I think if we did try to do it for every student, it would, but I don't think we can do it for every student. And the younger children aren't going to keep them on. You know, it'd be impossible. Even, I think even in some of the videos, there's been multiple videos going around. Even in China, I think they started at higher grades, but the teachers had a lot of protection.
Right.
So we have to, if there's a safety committee doing this, we should, we should, we should talk about it. But I did want to talk about it a bit in finance and see. Maybe we don't need as much time, but we should talk a little bit about it.
And I would think, this is, Darcy, I would think that there'd be some guidance coming from the state, you know? I mean, we may not be opening in September. We don't know when we're going to open.
Right.
And there's a real shortage of equipment, so... I mean, I would, I mean, personally, I would doubt that the state is going to be encouraging districts to start buying up supplies because we could have another crisis in the fall in the hospitals and, you know, first-line medical workers are going to need them. So, you know, I think this is, you know, something where you really wish you could be more prepared, but you kind of have to almost wait for the state, for guidance from the state to tell you how to respond because, you know...
I'm a little concerned because they haven't been very forthcoming in helping. I mean, they tend...
And everything is such a moving target.
I know, I know.
You know, it's no surprise to anybody that, you know, I'm still having to have interactions with the medical community. And every time I go for treatment, the protocols are different.
Right.
Literally every time, they've added some new procedures, some new questions, some new, you know, like as people's knowledge of this, you know, virus increases. I mean, you know, last time I had to see my doctor, it was like full-on face shield and I had to have my temperature taken before I walked in the building. And I mean, it's like there are new procedures and protocols. Time, I'm not convinced that we're, anybody's coming back in September. I'd be shocked.
I'm not, I'm not convinced either.
One reason why the District Safety Committee had to pause its thinking about protocols is because, is for that very reason. We don't want to set up a system and then be told, nope, that's not the system we're using.
It could be obsolete by September. What seems reasonable and practical now could be completely obsolete in September. You just have no idea.
Our Facilities Director, Mike O'Donnell, though, has jumped on the supply and is trying to secure at least the basics that we know we're going to need regardless, whether it was a bad flu season coming or COVID-20. So he is on that, that I can assure you.
Okay.
I see Michelle has a hand up, Anne.
Oh, Michelle, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say that I think, even though you're right, Darcy, everything is changing by the minute. I think that's the most important thing for us to remember in these conversations is that we are getting, you know, very little information from our leaders. So it's hard to know, like, what's really happening. But I think that, as usual, you know, history does repeat itself. And I've been listening to a lot of different audiobooks about the 1918 flu epidemic and how people, you know, were a little bit relaxed about all of these different quarantine techniques and whatnot. And then there was a second and a third wave. So I appreciate that we're all being as cautious as possible and, you know, I think that we're all going to be doing what we think is right. But we just don't know what that could be. But I do know that being educated about history does help us. So just, you know, to remind everyone that we're doing our best, you know? That's all I wanted to say.
All good points. Other questions about the budget or about PPE or opening school? All right, let's do our public comment on the budget now. This is the formal public hearing on the budget, of course. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments on the 2020/2021 budget. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. So at this time, we'll be taking comments only about the budget. Let me see if there's anybody in the room. I just lost my screen.
Nope, nobody.
No, nobody's there. Okay.
We do have one person.
Oh, we do? Oh, Ms. Becker is here. I'm sorry. Some of the faces and names go in and out on my monitor. Ms. Becker, please raise your hand or indicate you have a comment if you do. All right, seeing no hands, I'm going to go on. Darcy's face just popped up in giant format on my... No, I know, it's just, it's my Zoom platform. It's very erratic. All right. Mark, do you want to just formally, symbolically move 11B?
Yes. I've been looking forward to this whole week. So I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the Superintendent to approve the following resolution to adopt the 2020/2021 budget. Resolve that the total budget in the amount of $38,727,228 be approved. The total general fund of $35,611,301, special revenue fund $1,236,608, total debt service fund $1,879,319, and total of all funds is again $38,727,228. The maximum travel-related expenditure allotted for the 2020/21 annual school budget is $94,479.10. The amount allotted for the pre-budget year was $86,358.50. The amount spent to date is $34,132.26. The budget includes withdrawals from the Capital Reserve account for a total of $467,000 for the following purposes: installation of replacement boiler at Highland Park Middle School and district share of cost of athletic complex, track resurfacing, and field turf replacement.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead. It's for any discussion.
Well, I'm just confused. Maybe I missed something. My agenda says this is a workshop meeting. Did we advertise that the budget would be voted on? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we have to, we have to pass it tonight.
Okay, but so, but it was properly noticed that we would be taking some action, even though it was a workshop meeting.
Any other discussion before we vote? Linda, would you do the roll call, please? Ms. Byer?
Yeah.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman? Did Ms. Coleman leave the room? No, she's there.
I had her mute, yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dina Cola?
Yeah.
Mr. Wizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
All right, the budget is passed. Nice work, everyone. Lots of work, everyone. All right, let's move on to our committee reports and items for review. Michelle, there you are. Would you, do you have a committee report for us?
Yes and no. It's just a real short one. We did all get together remotely and just discuss some things.
Oh, oh, audio.
It was a major item that we just... Oh, did you lose me?
Yeah, it's a little crackly. Let me...
Hello?
Hello?
Oh.
Sorry, I just lost like the first paragraph of your comments. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so really, the major topic that was discussed in our committee was the homework discussion that we've been having for many years now. We had a survey that Scott sent out about reforming the homework standards. And it was not really conclusive as far as parents' responses. There was a good mixture of response about homework and how important it is to their child's education. It looks like, you know, from our conversation, we all noticed that the respondents were only around 200-plus. And so it wasn't a very good, you know, response. But it was likely a response that was from people who have, you know, the time and the technology in order to respond to such a survey. So I think it does give us some information, but, you know, no survey is going to be wonderful. And I think that what we saw was that there are some parents that really do want the homework to remain as is or even intensify. And then there are parents who don't want to see that. So I think that, you know, we need to do our due diligence on best practice and help make sure that we communicate what we learned and why we move forward in the directions that we do. So really, that was it. Work. We also did talk about the remote learning situation that we're all finding ourselves in and how difficult or easy that may be. And, you know, there is some concern from the committee about remote learning for our youngest students to make sure that, you know, we get some sort of information about how they're handling their day, what kind of communication is happening between parents and teachers. And making sure that we understand this crisis, as awful as it is, is helping us to see things very clearly. And that there are lots of different gaps that we talk about, you know, we talk about achievement gaps. But what we're really talking about is opportunity gaps. That students who have parents at home with them who are not essential workers, you know, they have different things available to them that students that don't have that, you know, don't. Also, parents that are working from home, you know, they can't take all the time in the world to do certain things. They're not trained for classroom management and whatnot. Those types of issues are going to come up for students, whether they have parents at home or not during this crisis. And the lack of technology and access to technology is an issue regardless of your family structure. It seems to be a serious socioeconomic problem. And what we're seeing is that the only social safety that our society has is our public school system. We're providing meals for students. We're providing... We're providing Wi-Fi access for students. We're providing all sorts of different things, mental health support. So it's, it's something that we, you know, are starting to notice because we've talked about it for many years, but we're starting to notice the repercussions of not having these things that we need. We truly feel that, you know, it's not sustainable to rely on the public school system for all of these social safety nets that are required. So it's important that we learn these lessons and bring that forward into our advocacy. And as far as, you know, there's, there's only so much we can do. We can't enter everything into the day curriculum-wise. So I think that it's going to take advocacy from all of us on our different committees to make sure that our students are getting what they need and frankly, our families are getting what they need. So whether that means that we have conversations with council that need to happen or other, other political leaders, these are important things for us to take note of. Because when we do return, whenever that is, there will be some students that take a long time to be assessed for all of the different gaps that are, are taking their toll during this crisis. So, yeah, I think that pretty much sums it up. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions for Scott?
Michelle.
Oh, go ahead. Yep.
About the summertime and the discussion at this point about what, what that might look like as we head into the summer, having not really been around the schools, you know, since March and to prepare the students for return in the fall.
I would like to hand that question over to Scott because I know we did discuss, you know, the gap that is left for the youngest students. You know, we wanted to hear more about how that was working out. And we also want to know if the students would have access to materials that are now sitting, you know, idly by at Irving School and Barto School especially. So maybe Scott could take that over and answer both, both questions about the youngest students in early this summer.
Within the next week to two weeks, I'll have detailed information about what the summer is, likely what fall is going to look like as well. We're not prepared to actually lay out everything we've been discussing about the summer. But as I suggested earlier, we're likely looking at a hybrid, part live, part remote learning, and it likely won't happen until mid-July. So we'll probably have to shorten our ESY program. We're hoping we're going to get some accommodations to the statute on how long ESY has to run. Michelle, I reached out to the Irving principal, Megan McNally, about your question regarding manipulatives. She got back to me to assure me that in fact, teachers are encouraging their kids, pre-K, kindergarten, and first grade, to use manipulatives that they have around the house and incorporate that in those instruction. She is wary of the whole process we have to go through to get all these things we have in the classrooms out to the kids' hands. But she did confidently share with me that teachers are having them use, you know, kitchen magnets that they might have on their refrigerator, things laying around the house, toys that they have in their room as manipulatives.
Got to be such a challenge. I completely understand where she's coming from, just the logistics of delivering things to students and expecting them to get back. So I appreciate the, the effort. And, you know, I would like to think that the kids are having a great time at home. I hope, I hope they are, but this is challenging.
Yeah, shout out to all the teachers and to the parents that have young children and work at home or are working somewhere else or aren't working at all and are now homeschooling. It's really been a challenge for everybody, and I think our teachers have really stepped up and our counselors and everybody else. Do you know if our counselors, Scott, are getting much call for mental health services? Or are they mostly doing pre-planned, regular counseling?
I have not, no, I have not gotten word of that. There are a couple of cases that I've actually dealt with personally. So I've had certain counselors or mental health specialists get involved. But if you'd like, I can follow up with the board next week or by email and just give you a sense of how things are playing out and all that level.
I'd just be curious to know. Other, go ahead.
I didn't really have a question. I just kind of wanted to add on to what Michelle said. One of the things that I think we could push for next year that happened this year because obviously the kids aren't in school is that reduction in testing, getting rid of the standardized test for this year. If we could push that into the next school year and even further beyond, like reduce our reliance on standardized testing to gauge how kids are doing. You guys know I work for NPE. We recently just did a survey of teachers and administrators and parents to find out how things are going. And my boss Carol also did some interviews. One of the people she interviewed, actually Scott, was the new principal at the school that we went to go visit in the Bronx and, which is one of the performance consortium schools that doesn't, they have a waiver from the state, they don't have to administer standardized tests to their kids, it's a community-based school. So they already have those systems in place where they have community, like instead of relying on testing, they have community supports in place for their kids and they have more of a project-based model. And he was very clear that this has been a much easier pivot for them just because of the way their school is structured, because that's already the way they approach their kids is more about their mental well-being and their, all of the services they need to be healthy, just humans, not just, you know, little machines that regurgitate information, even though they're one of the hardest-hit communities in the country, you know? So they're dealing with kids who have lost parents, kids who have lost family members, they've lost a student, they've lost an alumni. But the students that they, you know, that they are able to work with, they've already established all these connections that make it much easier for them to try to work with these kids. So, you know, I'm hoping that as we move forward, you know, a lot of us see the error of our ways of, you know, pushing for so much standardized testing and we start interacting with kids in a different way.
What do you think would be a good, good way to sort of make that point? I mean, do you think boards will be sort of getting together and talking about how assessing students was equally available to us without the test having?
It's going to become more of a part of the national conversation, I think, moving forward. Like right before DeVos, it became clear that schools, you know, a lot of schools weren't even going to be in session to be able to administer testing. That pushback was already happening. So, I mean, I think it's just, I think that issue is going to bubble up to the surface just kind of naturally because of the way things are going. So, you know, I think it'll be interesting to see where we are in the fall and what that's going to mean for next year. Because if we could take all that time that we tend, we spend getting kids ready for tests and taking tests and all of those things and just spend it on instruction, we could catch our kids up a lot more easily than we would if we have to spend all that time on the testing.
That's a really good point, all the recouping and all that stuff. Yeah, we're going to need the extra time next year. That's a point we could, we could finally make.
Darcy, I'm hearing rumors on my end that at least New Jersey is considering canceling the NJ SLA again next year.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think there's going to be, I mean, even from the, you know, the legislators who have been the hardest pushers of this, you know, regime, for lack of a better word, are going to be backing off. They're going to have to. So it's going to be like a time to really kind of take advantage of that and say, you know, this is what we've been saying all along, this is not a great use of student time. You know, we could be spending our time, money, and energy in, you know, a lot of different ways to, that would be far more beneficial to all of our students.
I'll tell you what the other silver lining is in this. Besides that, I think we're realizing that distance learning just does not work.
Right.
Really doesn't. I'm sorry, all those charters that popped up that promised, you know, land of opportunity. Yeah.
Well, here's who they work for. They work for the kids who have the parents at home that are standing in as the teacher, but they're not going to work for the vast majority of students. They work for the kids who have the parent who's going to sit there and they're going to set the lesson plans and they're going to set the structure and they're going to do all those things. But for the kids who don't have a parent willing, willing or able to do that, it just, it can't, it can't function the same way. It just can't.
I, I wanted to mention that in all of this free time that I have, I've been doing a lot of listening to podcasts and learning about the different things. And I listened to a podcast from a friend of another education activist friend of Darcy's named Jennifer, oh, gosh, now I just blanked on her name.
Berkshire.
Thank you, Jennifer Berkshire. And I'd be happy to send you all the link in an email, but what, what she was talking about was exactly what I was saying, that we need to, from a curriculum standpoint and from every other committee standpoint, we need to think about what our goals are. We need to think about what our standards are, and we absolutely need to rethink the way that we assess how schools are successful. So what is a successful school is a question that I would like the curriculum committee to think about this week. And I know that I've said it before, but, you know, we're supposed to be working on this curriculum strategic plan, and we haven't done a whole lot because everything's been thrown up in the air. But I think it's a really important question for us to ask, and it's a great opportunity right now to ask it. Like, what is a successful school? What kind of school do we want to actually return to? So.
Yes, successful schools. Haven't we talked about that program that I think, Darcy, you brought to our attention, the Successful Schools Consortium? Is that what it's called?
It's the Performance Consortium.
Oh, the Performance Consortium.
Nine schools across New York City that have a waiver from standardized testing and instead are able to work in a more project-based learning manner with their students, and they have remarkable results, absolutely remarkable.
If only, well, lots to talk about. Any other questions or comments about curriculum? Okay. Finance facilities, Mark? You have another report for us?
Yeah, thank you. So we had some discussions, we didn't meet, but we had some discussions last week regarding the budget. So we, we worked on kind of final versions of that. I did want to say, I think I might have jumped the gun, but I think before we do a finance meeting to discuss costs, I'd like to hear what the safety committee has to say. So I'll, I'll alert everyone about what we're, you know, if we're having a meeting or not, but I think I'd like to hear what the safety committee has to say first, especially if Mike O'Donnell has ordered some, some equipment, some at least minimal equipment. I'd like to hear that before we do something. So as far as the budget, I wanted to give, I think as I always do, some thanks first to Linda, who has worked tirelessly on this. This has been a very difficult budget year. So thank you, Linda, and thank you, Scott, managing this. It's really, it's really, it's really been difficult, to say the least. And then to the committee, Rob Magaziner and Ann, who joined us late last year and was attending meetings and being part of our committee, wanted to thank both of you also for working on this with me. So it's been hard. It's been really a difficult year. I mean, we had one bright part, which is indeed last year, the medical insurance rates went down for the first year ever. They're going to go up again for the second half of next year, but we're not going to get, we're not going to get that, that benefit again anytime soon. But that was, was an offset by children coming to our district who need extra help. And that's really made it difficult for us. And we have to support them, but it's difficult.
And I interject and say many thanks to Mark, who made this a full-time job the last several months, getting this budget ready. I mean, really phenomenal work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I would want to echo Ann's words and Mark's. Thanks to all of you and, you know, before we make this too much of a love fest.
Yeah.
It was, but it was, it was good work and it was difficult work. And, you know, I think that we can all be pleased that we came to the best conclusion that was possible out there.
Thank you, Rob. And Ann. So we have, we have only three items. Surely by next week, there will be more. But the item two is the travel and related expenses reimbursement report, which was on the board folder. Item three is a resolution approving contractors for what has been postponed, but I believe we'll vote on this. And then item four, which is to renew our contract with Computer Solutions, Inc. for our budgetary accounting and payroll software system and support. And that's for $12,372 for next year with, by the way, no increase. So that is the finance committee report.
Questions and comments? Mark, what were we, what are we actually voting on with the, the contractors for the musical? Are we committing to spending that money when the time comes?
I believe so. Linda, I, that has been my assumption. I didn't even ask you about it. But is that, is that the assumption that the musicians for the musical that's postponed were committing, but we're not paying yet because it hasn't happened?
Dr. Taylor?
Yeah, so I would like to compensate them for the prep work that they did because they did rehearse leading in, we were actually approaching tech week. And we also have some designs to do something like a recording or some kind of distant production to do something for all those kids and adults who put the time in.
Okay.
Will this amount include that, Scott, or will there be additional?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Fantastic.
All right, that's fair.
Yep, fair enough.
Me.
Other questions, concerns? Nope. Okay. Personnel is next. We have a lot of personnel items. I'm not going to read them all off. They're self-explanatory. This is the time of year when we, we renew the vast majority of our staff, not re-renew, we renew the contracts of the vast majority of our staff. Let's see. Everything is pretty self-explanatory. Let me see if there's anything interesting, and then I'll go to my committee report.
Ann, while you're doing that, can I just point out something? That TBD is listed in the vast majority of people's salary column because it's dependent on the ratification of the one, of the, of the contract that we are looking to resolve with HPDA. So once we get those numbers, we'll likely have to put another resolution on the agenda sometime in early summer with salaries.
That should be happening in the next few weeks, presumably. Probably, Mark, you think?
Yeah.
I think it's, at this point, waiting on final dots and t's so that Keith can go to the HPDA membership and have them ratified. So hopefully it will be, you know, a short number of weeks.
Okay, hopefully soon. One second, please, as I turn to my personnel notes. Oh, boy. One second, sorry, guys.
Okay.
Here we go. Okay, I don't think there's anything we haven't discussed that's public. Um, let's see. No, I don't think there is anything else. I don't think I have anything else that's not, that's public. Okay, very exciting.
If you don't mind, though, I'd like to say one other word. I'm sorry.
Please, yeah. No, go ahead.
Actually, two, two things. One, there will be several additional items to the personnel agenda that we'll both face going into next week. I've alerted the personnel committee about those items, but if the general board has questions, please give me a call or an email. The second thing I want to point out is we are now full-on posting for open positions. You can find all those vacancies on the website. There'll be, I believe, one more district-level position that we're going to be posting for this Friday. Otherwise, all of our teaching postings are out and support staff postings.
Right, that was an important point. As always, if anybody knows a Spanish teacher that wants to apply, they're encouraged to reach out to their networks. Let's see.
It does look like Chris has a question.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, no, I was going to say what you just said, that we're really looking for a Spanish teacher, and if you have people that you know, please encourage them to apply.
Absolutely. That seems to always be a sticking point for us.
How long has that been going on? Like, this is just remarkable to me that it is so hard now to find language teachers, whether, whether it's, whatever language it is, that's just mind-boggling.
I mean, I know they can make more money in business translation, but it seems like we have very good benefits in healthcare and pension stuff and kids.
I can tell you that from, just what I know, happening at Rutgers, there's so many other job opportunities available that don't require you to worry about shelter in place or thirty children in your classroom. And, you know, I don't know that the benefits outweigh the deficit for the students coming out of the university programs. And I don't know how we sweeten the pot, but I do know that And I don't know how we sweeten the pot, but I do know that what's happening in the public schools is not enticing. Lots of language majors.
A particular, a particular issue with the language, you know? I mean, I mean, there's a teacher shortage across the board for sure, but we think we're having a particular issue when it comes to...
I think it's just the other jobs that are available in that field are so much better. You know, money-wise, but also like opportunities to travel, opportunities to do different things. I don't know if that's it, but that's my guess because the job opportunities are just wonderful for language students in other areas.
Have you had any insights about that, Scott? Like your connections at Rutgers and stuff? Like?
Well, all we've been told by Mary Curran, who's our contact, our main contact in that area, is that they are having, they're struggling to graduate people with certifications in world languages. But they can't, they can't put their finger on why. They don't know people going into the private sector. They are seeing fewer candidates apply to be part of the GSE and get their certification of world language. I have to say, though, I do have, I'm not going to show my, all my cards, but I have two, what I think might be aces. One of whom I think the personnel committee is aware of, and then another who is rest interest. But Darcy, I, Mary Curran has not suggested that it's one reason or another.
Right, no, it's just, it's really interesting. And unfortunate because it's such an important part of, you know, students' introduction to the world, right? Through another language, so, you know.
I think the credentialing testing that's going on now for education majors is a tremendous impediment. And I think that the students don't want to go through it. And so many of the, many of the universities and colleges in the state have had drastic reductions in their number of graduates in the, in the education departments. And then I was at, and this is just incidental and shows what we already know. When we were at the, when we were at the school boards meeting last October, I ran into this person I knew from Highland Park from years ago, who works as an education, kind of a consultant for the firm who is used by the NJEA to find teachers. And I said, so we're looking for a Spanish teacher, and we could never find a French teacher. And she said, you're one of 25 districts that can't find a French teacher, but good luck. The Spanish teachers are getting to be like that. I have a dozen people looking for Spanish teachers. I think a lot of that is because of the credentialing and testing that's going on at the college level to become a T-shirt. It's made it much, much, much harder for students to get through.
Ugh, well, it is so frustrating.
It's terrible. It's bad. There's going to be shortages across the board in the coming years, I think more than now.
Other personnel-related questions, comments? Anybody hand it up? No, okay, Mark, do you want to do the policy report, please?
Yes, yes, we have, we have five policies coming up next week for voting on first reading and five policies, which we voted on last week, coming up for second reading. So the new policies, and I'm happy to answer questions on either group, but the policies for first reading are 2422 health and physical education. This is the policy that controls the sex education that we do and seem to be a reasonable place to put the availability of condoms in. So we have words for next week, which you can look in, you know, obviously on the website for a, I think it's a single paragraph now, on the district dispensing condoms at a private place, so nobody's checking on students in the high school. So it's very, and the high school giving out materials on sex education, which we added, which came from the New York City rules. So that's in, that's going to be in the policy. And our desire is that the board, is that the, once the board votes on this as a changed policy, that the administration is in place in September. And that, Scott, that's, that's where, that's where we're moving.
Yep.
Great. Items 3437 and 4437, simply put into the policies law that says that we hold jobs for staff or teachers who have to, or choose to go on to military leave. So we hold the positions, and there's the legal words in there about that. Item 3337 is a mandatory policy, which we haven't had, which is the approach the committee has taken to go through the mandatories, which we haven't had, some of which have to do with law that's been passed in the last year or two. And this gives the guidelines for using service animals in the district. And it follows the law. I mean, I went through it two or three times. We just, there's some parts that we hardly believe is in the law, which I won't say, but it follows the law. We just go straight through the law.
Can you talk about the horses, please?
Yes, the miniature horses. When I first read that, I didn't believe it. But then I looked at the law. It's in the law. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hurdles those horses have to go over before they're allowed, before they're allowed in the school building.
The miniature horse lobby, obviously very powerful.
Yes. And then the other one for first reading, 7425 lead testing and water, that's mandatory. If everyone remembers to, four years ago, there was a hubbub about lead testing, and we did test the lead. We did it before anyone, before they even passed the law. Linda ran that through, and we got a test, testing in. And we did the testing, and I think we found one water fountain in the old part of Irving that was above the levels, and we remedied it, but none of the rest of the district had an issue. And this law, this policy will require us, per law, to report to the state every six years and do testing and so on. And again, following the law. So this seems like a reasonable policy to put into effect. And then for last time, there were these five policies. I'm not going to go over them again. We just, we just voted on these. These all make sense. The one, for instance, on varsity letters, that's a mandatory policy, which gives the authority to the administration to decide what to do with varsity letters. But it's a mandatory policy, so it seemed reasonable if we didn't have it to put it in. The others, most, several of the others have to do with the ESA requirements on the ESA review of the district. So those are the 10. We have more, there's lots more, there's a long list, and we're going through them pretty well, I'd say, given the circumstances. So we'll, we'll bull our way through them. I want to say that this is an interesting board because we actually discuss each of these. When I look at, when I, when I try to get information on any of these, I'll look up, I'll look up the number. I'll look up the number or the title, you know, on the web, and I get to other school districts. And what I find is they have every policy, every word is the same as the standard policy that we're given by Strass, Esme. No one's clearly gone over it because there's no changes. And I think this is slower, but it's better. We actually read and decide what we're going to do and make the appropriate changes. So anyway, there they are.
And what I do appreciate, Mark, is that the committee gives me the opportunity to bounce some of the input off of my leadership team.
Yes.
And/or other affected staff, like our high school nurse, for instance.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think we've tried to be more sensitive to the need to do that.
Yeah, and I'm very pleased we're actually doing something about, about the condoms that the Board of Health has been discussing for years and which will, which will benefit, benefit our students. So, so, no, it's, and which I know the board, individually, board members have told me that they're very much in favor of this. So let's do it.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions or comments for Mark? All right. Monique, did you have an Equity and Excellence report for us tonight or no?
Yes, I do.
I thought you had a meeting.
Yes, we did see last meeting. And our, the main topic really was one that already was touched on a bit, but that is preparing for the anticipated skills gap next year when the member school does reopen. Specifically supporting students who are maybe falling behind, you know, during this extended closure. Scott reported that.
Monique, I'm having a hard, I don't know if anybody else is, but I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, okay. I'm not muted.
That's better.
Okay, maybe just my position in the chair.
Yeah, closing would be a good help.
Yep. Okay, so, yeah, so Scott did share that him and the leadership team have been discussing how to prepare to support students who are really going to need it because they are maybe facing disparities in accessing the digital learning during the school closure. He, Scott did report that the leadership team is looking at making September and October catch-up months for all students, basically. And the idea would be to just administer, spend the first couple of months or the first couple of weeks actually administering some sort of an entrance assessment to sort of see where all the students' skill levels face fall in the core content areas, just in terms of their readiness to continue at their current level. And then he had talked about or presented the idea of possibly placing students in classes during those couple of months based on their skills, retention, and growth. And I think committee all were in agreement that we did not, we did not really like that model of kind of placing students in different groupings, so to speak, based on how they did on the assessment test. And Scott did acknowledge that the leadership team had also not agreed with that plan, part of the plan, anyway. And, you know, obviously determining students' performance levels based on one narrow assessment is not the way that we want to go in terms of determining the kind of instruction that students are going to get when they come back to school or how they'll be placed. And obviously, the other concern there is also just our, the restratification of students based on, you know, the quasi-tracking system. We want to make sure we don't do that as we're going through the process of de-tracking in our core subjects. So, but we did talk about...
Lost you for a second, Monique, or at least some of us did.
You know, I'm going to land when we turn, so we did just talk.
Wait, Monique, you did a...
Talk about also, oh, I see my internet connection is unstable.
We lost like your last six sentences, maybe?
I did get a pop-up message. Okay. So did you get the part where I said that Scott acknowledged concerns about determining students' performance levels based on one sort of narrow assessment that would be given to them in the fall?
Yeah, we got that part, yes. Yeah, now you're coming in. There's something after that that faded out.
Oh, right, that we did not want to implement a system that would in any way sort of undo our efforts at de-tracking, you know, in academic equity. So I think everyone was in clear agreement that, you know, while it's important to kind of assess where students are in terms of their skills, placing them based on that assessment is not the way that we want to go. We sort of moved to talking about, well, then what can we do in the summer to, you know, help students sort of continue with their learning and have some opportunity to have retention or possibly grow. We were rethinking our summer assignment list. Scott said that he would raise this topic, as well as the possibility of extending the summer remediation program that occurs every summer.
Oh, Monique.
I could probably fill in some of the blanks.
Oh, now she couldn't, we're losing you.
Sorry, guys, this is my internet connection.
Oh, I hate this.
This is my internet connection.
We usually go down in the afternoon at my house.
Speaking of equity gaps, right, and access, I'm having one. In my attic. Sorry, guys, Scott, did you want to fill in anything that I missed there?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
The leadership team has been, and again, I'm going to provide details as soon as we have them concretely put in place. But we've been talking about reallocating some of our Title I money, which we're now being granted the ability to do, to extend the support we provide kids, but all kids in the district over the summer. So we can catch them, get them up to speed. But I just, I want to echo what Monique said about the fall. And I don't think you brought this up, and if you did, it was coming through a little choppy. There was some talk about creating support programs that would be pulling kids out of classes. But we're, we're going to focus more on how to provide push-in services in September and October. We don't want to create a defective tracking program, which is really the antithesis of what we're, what this board and I are trying to do. So we're going to hone in on that. And Monique, but before you wrap up, I think, you want to bring up NHS?
That's a good question. I wanted to ask you what I was able to bring up in terms of public discussion right now. You had some personnel overlap in that conversation.
Yeah, I think we'll have more information to share with you. I did promise the committee I would report back about an action plan that we're going to, I'm going to propose to the committee for input to foster more of a diverse pool for NHS. It's something that Michelle, I think, first brought up a couple of months ago, and now the Equity and Excellence Committee has taken up. So we definitely had a conversation about that. And there is a personnel tie-in here that I can't talk about yet, but I think it'll become public in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think we had a really good discussion. Can you guys hear me? Okay? No?
Audio's in and out. Video is perfect.
Okay, sorry, guys, I give up, but Scott, you did summarize for me, I think.
Sorry, Monique. This is painful. Comments, questions for Monique? She can hear us, I think, so, you know, go for it.
I sort of missed the, the audio wasn't really enough for me to really hear. Could you just say again, like, with the assessments, avoiding the narrow assessments, which courses are we, were we talking about?
We don't know. What we know, Chris, is that we've got to determine how, what kind of learning regression took place over the last four months before we can kick in with what would be a traditional 2020, 2021 school year. So we're talking about designing some kind of authentic assessment to review what kids know, what they don't know, what concerns they have socially, emotionally, and mentally that may have impacted their learning growth. And then hopefully by mid-October, late October, after we provide push-in support, pick up with the traditional year, assuming we go back in September and are alive. So what we know is we want at least a month and a half, maybe two months of remediation time, support time. But I think it's going to be incumbent upon how effectively we assess what kids, how they feel mentally and what they know or don't know coming into the 2020, 2021 school year.
I would imagine this is going to be a particular challenge for the Math 6 revamp.
Actually, I had a meeting about that this morning with Ms. Brady, Dr. Nicosia. We're forging ahead.
Good.
Highlight might be pushed back by a couple of months, but we're ready to launch Math 6 Plus next school year.
My only concern would be, you know, and I know, Scott, you'll be very mindful of this because I think your communications home to families have been, you know, very on point in terms of kids' social and emotional health during all of this. You know, the last thing any kid is going to want is to come home and be assaulted with, or come back to school and be assaulted with tests. And if that is what happens, you could very well be more assessing kids' social and emotional well-being than what their skill gaps actually are. So, you know, I think we just, that approach is going to be, I think, riddled with all kinds of error and problems. So, you know, I think the staff is going to have to be remarkably mindful of bringing students back into the fold. I mean, they come back every summer having lost skills, right? I mean, that's what happens every summer. We can, you know, you can automatically assume that that's just going to be exacerbated. So, and I know we always do some testing at the beginning of the school year to kind of assess where kids are. But, I mean, I guess I would just, you know, kind of want to bring to the forefront of everybody's mind that we don't want to go beyond where we would go in a typical year.
I think about it like this, Darcy. I think our kids will not have had contact with their classroom peers or their teachers for six months if they returned in September. That's a half a year of breaking down those relationships. of breaking down those relationships that they built with the adults in the schools. I mean, I really, I know the remote learning thing is happening, and people are trying their best. It does not replace live interaction. So, yeah, we gotta be, I mean, half a year of disconnectedness is unprecedented. Chris, you've had your hand up.
Yeah, so in Dr. Nikosia's plan for this, I think she had the idea of reducing the class sizes for the Math 6 Plus on the basis that, you know, having, the teachers felt that having students of mixed background, more mixed background and ability in the same classroom would really only be possible if there was a reduced class size. And I think we're funding a number of six periods to facilitate that. Is that in the budget? Okay, great.
I was gonna actually say that. I forgot to say it before, but I was gonna say it under Old Business, yeah. There are, there are, I think the number may be two and maybe three, but there are six periods built in. We were able to fund them.
Michelle, did you have a hand?
Oh, yeah, I, I just wanted to say that I, I feel like between the Curriculum Committee and the Equity and Excellence Committee, there's always been a lot of overlap. So I was, I was gonna propose the idea that we kind of join forces on a conversation about assessing kids whenever the return happens, because, yeah, we don't want to, you know, slam them with tests the minute they walk in the door. So I think we need to have, between our two committees, we need to have a conversation about what the return should look like and what our, what our, I guess, what our standards are for the kind of school we want to return to. So how will we assess those kids and be, I think, natural growth from that conversation? But I would love to, you know, kind of join forces in that and really put some things down concretely, some tangible goals or some tangible ideals. What do you think?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that. And part of our conversation, our committee meeting, did turn towards that particular subject. And that is how can we holistically, you know, and creatively assess the students using non-traditional, you know, forms? Both when they return in the, in the fall and, you know, in the long term, as Darcy already touched on and kind of had this conversation in this meeting. But this is the perfect opportunity to really make that kind of like, this is what we need to do. Only because it's, for one, we're fair in terms of looking at the spectrum of students that we have in, you know, under our jurisdiction, so to speak, in our district. And just also, again, keeping in mind sort of socially, emotionally, how they're gonna be returning to school and the need to kind of gently bring them back into the fold, so to speak, and reunite them with the community. So how we do that in terms of meetings, I think it'd be great if we could overlap some of our meetings. Maybe even have our meetings run concurrently so that we can have and really design some overlap time specifically devoted to this discussion. Because I'm really adamant from the Equity and Excellence standpoint about ensuring that, while, yes, we know that there's skills retention every year, we know that there's always gonna be students who are gonna have, you know, be hit hardest with that, and especially at this time. And so how do we, you know, from an equity standpoint, ensure that we're kind of making opportunities more available to the students who need it the most?
Monique, I'm gonna keep you muted, because we're getting a lot of background noise, okay? It's okay, okay.
Michelle, did you have your hand up before? I lost track of who had a little blue hand up.
I think that was Chris.
That was Chris? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I lowered the hands after we spoke with them.
Okay, excellent. All right, more Equity and Excellence questions, concerns, discussion? All right, then I believe it's time for public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. I think we have one member of the public here. Please make yourself known if you would like to comment. All right, no public comment tonight. I don't have anything from my president's report. Does anybody have anything for Old Business? Okay, how about New Business?
I kind of do.
Yeah, go.
My new business is just me. Sorry. I can't tell you guys how wonderful it's been to be here tonight with you. Shoot, I wasn't.
We're all doing the same, don't worry.
You know, it, it kind of blows my mind that it's been eight months since I've, you know, been in a room with all of you to have a meeting. I'm just so grateful and happy to be here and appreciate all of you stepping in and stepping up and doing everything you've done in the last eight months to keep everything moving and to, you know, do all the thankless work that we all do on behalf of our students and our teachers and our staff. And, you know, thanks, obviously, in particular to Ann and to Mark for stepping up in the way that they have. I couldn't be more appreciative. And thanks to all of you for, you know, your texts and emails and just any little bit of, you know, love and support that you sent my way in the last eight months. It's really, really helped. And I'm so glad to be on the other side of this and, you know, hopefully won't have to go through it again. And I just wanted to let you all know how much you all mean to me and how much I appreciate everything that you've done and everything that you do. So, that's what I got.
Oh, thank you. We could not be more delighted to have you back.
Happy. I liked it.
It feels like we're moving back towards some normalcy. We've missed you, your friendship and your leadership as well.
It's really nice to be here, so. Thanks, thanks for waiting for me and thanks for helping me out. Off the island, you did it, so.
Can you imagine? It's time to put out your torch, or what do they do?
Never.
Never, 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 never. Right, welcome back.
Thanks, guys.
All right, time for public comment. We'll zoom through this. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Is there a public comment from our public? Looks like not. All right, I'd like to move that we adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
All right, all right. See you guys next week, right?
Yep.
Bye, thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.